Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Wilson, can you do rope on please?
Yes, sir. Terry Jeter, District One.
Here.
Michelle Glover, District Two.
Here.
Eddie Skeen, District Three.
Here.
Michael Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Danny Castile, District Five.
Here.
Chris Manus, District Six.
Here.
And Stephanie Addington, at large.
Here.
Mr. Chair, can you give a call?
Awesome. Uh, has everyone had a chance to look over the agenda? I know Michelle has. Uh, are there any changes, approve, uh, additions, uh, or subtractions?
I make the motion, sorry.
Alright.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as is, and I'll second that motion.
Alright, Stephanie, uh, makes the motion, Michelle seconds. All, uh, vote by way of saying ah?
Ah.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright, we got quite a few, uh, minutes to approve here. Uh, first, um, have you all had the chance to read over the minutes for May sixteenth, twenty twenty five, for a special call meeting? Uh, are there any, uh, changes that you would like to make to that, or should we approve it as is?
I'll make a motion, we approve it as is.
Alright. Mr. Jeter makes the motion, do I have a second?
Oh, I'll second.
Stephanie seconds. All vote by way of saying ah?
Ah.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Uh, June fourth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting, has everyone had a chance to read those? Are there any changes? Do I have a motion to approve those?
Some moved.
Stephanie makes the motion.
I'll second it.
Michelle seconds. All vote, uh, all vote by saying ah?
Ah.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, June the fourth, a budget workshop, that's the second half of that day. Are there any changes? Does everything look good there? Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Michelle.
Second.
Michelle makes the motion, Stephanie seconds. All vote, vote by way of saying ah?
Ah.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, June twenty third, twenty twenty five, uh, has everyone had a chance to read over that? Are there any changes, any additions? Alright, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Alright, Michelle makes the motion.
I'll second.
Stephanie seconds. Alright, all vote by way of saying ah?
Ah.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright.
What about the third just, do we need to do it?
I don't think those are done yet.
Okay.
Yeah, they're still processing.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, uh, citizens' expression. Uh, I don't have my exact piece of paper here today, I'm having a little break. Oh, do you? Um, I'm having a little trouble getting things to load for me this morning. Yeah, see, oh. Oh, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Yep.
Citizen's expression period is a point in the meeting where anyone who wishes to address the board may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium, state your name, where you're from, and the county, and/or what organization that you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, we have no particular order. We ask that you take turns and speak your business. Today, we have Ms. Tass and Mr. Chapman. Um, additionally, I would like to remind everyone that we have a time limit on these, and it'll show up on the screens. Uh, Ms. Tass, if you would.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Pinky Tass, Snowflake Road, and I've got some, that's on Snowflake Road backing me. And it's about dirt roads in Scott County. We got two hundred and fifty-two miles of dirt roads in Scott County. We got bushes, potholes, washboards, and with summer coming on, dust. They came through once and put some, it rained the next day. And I know VDOT can't work without money. And it takes a lot of workers to take care of just two hundred and fifty-two miles of dirt road, not counting all the other. And that's why I'm trying to get a hold of Mr. Terry Kilgore to get more money allotted for dirt roads. And, and if he had to drive them dirt roads everything, every day, twice a day, or whatever, I think it'd be a, a change. And, and then another thing I bring up is the Riverside, uh, property over there. It don't look like there's anything much happening over there, and we've heard a daycare center coming in, but it don't look like it's happening. But that would be more money coming in for the county, if we could get something over there to bring in more money for the county. Let's see, was that all I've got to touch on? Um, and I want to thank you all for your hard work. I know y'all, it's, it's a job. And keep Snowflake Road on the six-year plan, and the question is, I guess I'll have to ask this, Mr. Sumter again, what year? And y'all have a happy and a blessed fourth. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chapman.
Good morning, my name is Robert Chapman, and I'm the park manager at Natural Tunnel State Park and the current treasurer of the Scott County Chamber of Commerce. The Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association is partnering with the park to apply for a grant through the Virginia Land Conservation Fund for funding to purchase property between the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Interpretive Center and Cane Gap in Dovefield. This property is privately owned and is one of the last remaining sections of the Wilderness Trail that is undisturbed. The goal of the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association is to purchase the property, then donate it to DCR and Natural Tunnel to one day establish a multi-use trail connecting the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Interpretive Center to Cane Gap and the property that the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association, uh, Association already owns on top of the, uh, mountain there. I'm here today on behalf of the Daniel Boone Wilderness Trail Association and the park to ask for a letter of support as part of this grant application process. I've given you a copy of a sample letter, uh, and I can also submit an electronic copy for you to place, uh, on your letterhead should you decide to help support us in this effort. Our community is rich in cultural and natural resources, and supporting this effort is a way to help Natural Tunnel continue our mission to conserve natural, scenic, historic, and cultural resources of the Commonwealth of Virginia, and to provide recreational and educational opportunities consistent with the constitution of these lands, water, and facilities that leaves them unimpaired for future generations to enjoy. Uh, I look forward to hearing from you, and again, you have a copy of the letter. If you have any questions, please hesitate to reach out, my contact information is on that letter, uh, that you have, and I'll be glad to email Chairman Manus, you, if you'd like a copy electronically.
Yes, please.
If y'all decide to do so. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, sir.
Thanks, sir. Speak to you there in a second.
Sure.
Ask you some questions. I don't know if you're the one over it, or maybe you could tell me or something. Like the park up at Hanging Rock and High Knob, uh, I've, and even one over in Wise County, uh, Gus River. I notice they don't keep them up no more. Now, brush is in it, uh, lot of moss on top of the buildings and stuff. Really run down. Picnic tables not clean or nothing. Um, did you tell me, or maybe you might be the one over it or something? How to get that maybe straightened up?
Unfortunately, those properties don't fall under Department of Conservation and Recreation with the state of Virginia. They may be forest service properties. And so that would be something that you might work with the, maybe the Clinch Ranger District Office, maybe out of Norton. Start there, maybe work with some of their folks specifically, try to get some of those areas addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
I was, uh, sorry, I never wrote my name down.
It's fine.
I live on Aggie Pram Road, but my bus route is on six seventy-one, and I come through there twice a day before it's throughed out like that. And, uh, survey ain't never been cut or nothing, matter of time you'll cut it, you know. I've got a proposition I just want to ask you all. I drive school bus, and seeing is believing. I was wondering if I could pick y'all up at the school bus here one morning, take y'all tour ride through, uh, Snowflake, out to Nickleville, across Dean Hall, back through Big Mox, back down here. That's the option I'm considering, y'all, I guess Dexter Martin, every bar bus, or John Purcell, Longville too, but anyway, the scene is believing, and you can see what kind of road it is. And I travel that road twice a day when school starts, plus I take kids on trips, field trips, and everywhere else. And what's embarrassing is when I take that bus and go through there, it's dirt. And, uh, anytime I park that bus, they go over where that bus is from, God, county. And I get, I look at that sometimes, but sometimes I try to worship that bus when I can, if I can, worship it all, worship it less all. But I know road is hard to keep up, I know it takes money, but we need something to help Scott County out so our kids can stay there longer. Cause they do buy them new cars now, and they're fifty thousand dollars or better, and you don't want another car over a dirt road. Y'all won't take off the evil or dirt road either. It takes time, it takes money, and I appreciate anything you could possibly do. But you can keep that proposition in mind, if you don't care, if you do, I, I'll be glad to take you one day, one morning, nine o'clock. Be back here at twelve, be no problem, anytime. But, uh, thank you, and I appreciate your time. Pretty question, though.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public expression? With that, we'll close public expression.
I have some comments in regards to that, unless there's a correction you need to take.
Uh, can we do the Cane Gap, uh,
Sure.
Uh, support?
Sure.
So, uh, do I hear a motion for, uh, a letter of support for the Cane Gap access property acquisition?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Alright, Michelle makes the motion, Daryl seconds. Uh, uh, everybody vote by way of saying ah?
Ah.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries.
Uh, Mr. Darty, I spoke to you earlier, but I did speak with Mr. Sumter with VDOT and Wise, and, uh, their plans are to clear the brush on Snowflake Road before school starts. Their crews are still working on the storm cleanup, but he said that would be taken care of before school starts. Uh, Ms. Tass, I think you're about four years out on the road. I can give you the exact date, um, when it's gonna be paid, uh, but I think you're about four years out on getting that paid. But you bring up a good point, I just want to talk about it later in the meeting, but I think this is the right, appropriate time to discuss it. We keep talking about dirt roads. We're on pace to get all of our dirt roads paid in the next five hundred years. Now, we can sit here and talk about it, but really, we can't do much about that. But we have people that can, and that's Mr. Kilgore, Mr. Pilliam. And I would like to make a motion that we invite them to our meeting, a public meeting, supervisor meeting, to address these concerns. These are reoccurring month in and month out, so I'd like to make a motion that we invite Mr. Kilgore, Mr. Pilliam to discuss our road situations in Scott County.
I'll, I'll second that.
Alright, everybody vote by way of saying ah?
Ah.
Ah.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. We'll send them out an invitation to Mr. Kilgore and Mr. Pilliam. Alright, are there anything, is there anything else that we would like to, uh, uh, discuss or address during this time? Alright, then we'll move on to the next section. Uh, we don't have any public hearings, I think, do we? Unfinished business, erosion and sediment control ordinance, Mr. Isaac Stanley?
Good morning, um, my name is Isaac Stanley, I work for Scott County Soil and Water. I'm here to follow up on the ordinance revision changes I presented to you all last month. Uh, I hope everybody has had a chance to review those. Are there any questions or comments, concerns?
I did speak with prior to the meeting, and, uh, I think you confirmed that there's no engineering required for farm construction.
Right, if you adopt this, yeah.
If, if it's adopted. Uh, there's no public hearing, uh, since we're not changing if we adopt the ordinance, since we're not modifying the ordinance as presented.
There's no public hearing required. Okay.
There is public hearing required.
I'm not sure on that.
Yeah, we have to have.
If it's in, if it's in ordinance, we can.
Advertise for public hearing in August.
Okay.
Alright, has everybody had a chance to read over that, uh, in the month between? Everybody okay with it? Do I have a, a motion to, uh, approve, to advertise a hearing for these changes to the ordinance?
Summer.
Alright, Steph- Stephanie makes the motion, Mr. Jeter seconds. Uh, everybody vote by way of saying ah?
Ah.
Opposed? Alright, motion carries. Alright, new business, uh, thank you, Mr. Stanley, I'm sorry. New business, memorandum of understanding with Sullivan County Recycle.
Um, yeah, if, uh, Mr. Dingus would like to present that.
Morning, Board. Um, I introduced this, I think at the last meeting that this was coming up, and we've worked with Sullivan County on finalizing the, uh, uh, memo of understanding, uh, between, uh, Scott County Public Works and Sullivan County. Uh, they have, uh, recently constructed a recycling facility in Blountville, and they invited us to, uh, bring our recycled materials, uh, to that facility at no cost, uh, which is, uh, a very admirable thing that Sullivan County's doing, reaching out regionally to try, to try to help, uh, the recycling problem. Um, they'll be accepting, uh, paper and cardboard, plastics one through seven, uh, aluminum and steel cans, and other, uh, mutually recycled items that, that might come up. Uh, you know, we have a responsibility to, uh, uh, abide by the rules and, uh, and keep that relationship strong. So, uh, I'll talk to the drivers about, uh, showing where to go and, uh, work on the logistics here in the county. Uh, we haven't been recycling since, uh, the China Shield, uh, proclamation came through, and it fell, uh, away from everybody. Uh, that's been, uh, quite a, quite a number of years now, I think, maybe eight, seven or eight years now, so, uh, we gotta get back into the swing of it. We have our recycling bins staged, and they've had them staged at the transfer station, uh, and other, uh, amenities are already in the, uh, solid waste centers. Uh, we will need, uh, it's something that the public has wanted, but, uh, the public will also have to be disciplined at our solid waste centers and not contaminating our recycling materials. Uh, that, uh, where we don't have them manned all the time. I'm hopeful that we don't see that, uh, but we'll, uh, come back to you and address that as, as we move forward. But it's a big deal, uh, good, uh, opportunity for the county to get back into the recycling game. And, uh, we're asking today, uh, that I can sign a MOU with Sullivan County, uh, for them to accept our recycling. And it, it has a, uh, a beginning and an end date, uh, but they left that blank, so we may do this yearly. And, uh, I'll come back to you next year and, uh, renew this MOU. I'm not sure if they want to do it one year or five years, we can discuss that. Either way, is that fine with the board, if I do it one year or five years?
I think yearly, I think yearly would be a good idea.
Yearly.
Also, um, to get the residents of Scott County on board with this, maybe we should advertise in the county paper and in the Times News, and just let people know that, that's what we're doing. I mean, we do it here, you know, we're talking about it here, but not everybody watches the YouTube, you know, replay of the board meeting and everything, but I do believe we need to start advertising, and we need to get the attendance, I mean, set up and ready to go, and.
We, we will, that's part of those logistics that it's talking about. We won't, we need to be ready to receive before we advertise.
Right.
And, uh, uh, it may take a couple of months. We're a couple of drivers down right now, so, uh, that's part of that logistics. Uh, it's gonna take, it's gonna be additional routes on our drivers, it's gonna be additional work, uh, but, uh, we were doing that before. And, uh, so, uh, hopefully, uh, it will divert, uh, a lot of the solid waste that goes to the landfill. Uh, for every ton of recycled material that we can divert.
And that will help us with costs.
About forty-seven dollars, yeah, so.
Absolutely.
You're talking about thousands of tons that could be diverted.
Mr. Dingus, um, is, will every trash site across the county be equipped with a recycle bin?
That is part of the logistics that we'll be, uh, looking at. Yeah, we'll, we'll figure that out and, and see what is, uh, the, the best setup, uh, that we can do. Uh, we're still in negotiations with, uh, VDOT, I'm not sure, Ms. Starne's left that, uh, about the Moxon Gap site. Uh, that would be, it could be, uh, uh, just a big recycling site where people go there just to recycle materials. So, we'll, we'll talk about that and see what we want to do there.
That would be absolutely wonderful if we had that.
Bill, uh, you know, I told several people they wanted to know what happened to that, and I explained it to them, and they said that was one of the better sites in the county, and I said, yeah, cause everybody's going to Kingsport. They seemed to really like it, I told them, we've been working on that. They said that'd be a plus if we could get that opened up.
Yeah, we, we've been working with, uh, VDOT, uh, about, uh, acquiring that property, so we didn't own the property.
Right.
So, we didn't have a choice on, uh, removing that site. So, uh, once we get them in hand, and, and the, uh, turning situation is a whole lot better now than it was previously, uh, with the work that's been done there with the parking lot and the turning lane, so.
Um, Bill, do you think that we could get a few more trash can, uh, at some of these sites? I hear that come up pretty regularly, where they hung up dumpsters at, at them sites, and, uh, I know in the last few years, uh, a lot of them has, I guess, got over, bottoms rusted out of them, you know, we, not as many as they used to be.
Well, we have replacement dumpsters for those situations, and we have bottoms that, uh, that the, uh, guys at the landfill can put on, uh, old dumpsters. But, uh, a- as far as a capacity of one site, so we have fourteen sites throughout the county, you're visiting multiple sites when you have a trash truck go out and pick up sites. Uh, Dovefield, for example, has about twelve dumpsters. There's probably room that you could put twenty-two dumpsters there, but you still have a limitation for the capacity of the truck. So, if you go to Dovefield and pick up twenty-two dumpsters, you're not gonna be getting clinch poured on that trip.
No.
Or ricko on that trip. So, the number of the dumpsters, uh, may make it a little better for that one person that comes and they're full that day, but it's really logistically not going to increase. It's gonna make it worse somewhere else, cause the capacity of the truck is the limitation. Does that make sense?
Oh, yeah, it makes sense, but, um, remember when there was maybe eight dumpsters that clinched forward?
Mm-hmm.
And then they're down to about five. Uh, I know they're not as many, I ain't counted.
If there's not as many, I, y'all asked the guys about that, we have, we've bought dumpsters, and we have replacement dumpsters. And, and again, uh, the, uh, we've been down a couple of drivers.
Right.
Uh, so, the, they've been running just as fast as they can, just to keep in front of the tire.
Oh, they're running to death, I see them every Saturday morning, I mean, uh.
But we'll, we'll talk to them about getting, replacing as many dumpsters as we have. We shouldn't have a site with less dumpsters.
Do we ever rebuild them dumpsters?
We do.
Uh, do y'all get, like, maybe the vocational school or somebody, like, that'd be a good experience for some of them boys.
We, we have before, but the turnaround at the vocational center is pretty slow. I mean, they do, they do a good job, but they, they do it as a project, and it's a semester, you know?
I learned the weld there, so, I know.
They've, uh, worked on a, uh, recycle bin, and it did a good job, but it took a whole, you know, all school year to get it done. Uh, we, uh, we have a couple of options, we got, uh, welding capability ourselves, we, we can buy, uh, they're, they're like a little boot, and usually it's the bottom of the dumpster that becomes a problem.
Right, cause it's on the ground.
And you can cut off the, uh, bottom, and there's a boot that goes in, it's cheaper to do that and buy new dumpsters.
Oh, yes.
But it takes time, and it takes a person doing that, that, uh, we really don't have. They're driving trucks just to keep up in front of the flow right now. So, it's, we get full staff, that'd be a lot easier to do.
When are you going to hire them, both two drivers?
I interviewed one last week, and he went for his physical, so hopefully, his start date may be next week. Uh, the other, uh, position we're waiting on, uh, some personnel stuff to, for that to open up. We could go ahead and hire that, but, uh, it's probably, uh, prudent to wait, make sure I have that position.
Those are cardboard dumpsters for the recycle?
Yes, sir.
What, you're gonna have just one of them at a site?
Probably, yeah.
There need to be something put on it, that they need to break that cardboard down if they don't.
They have the little slit.
That dumpster fills up pretty quick.
Yeah, they have the little slit, they don't supposed to throw it over in it, but, uh, they have the little slit, and what will happen with, uh, cardboard, you may at Yuma see that cardboard being full, but other places, they're not full yet. So, to run a cardboard run, you would do a packer truck, and they would go get all those cardboard dumpsters, go to each site, and take that load to Sullivan County. They can't go to the site like Yuma, pick up trash and get the cardboard at the same time. So, it's a special run, you know, it could be on a, on a slower day, maybe a Wednesday or something, that they, they make that run. Uh, so on cardboard, that's what you would see. And, uh, you may have one filled up, and you may get a call, cardboard's filled, filled up, but that's, that's why we don't go pick up that dumpster because it's full of cardboard. We need several of them, pretty full, to, to make it feasible to, to do. Uh, if we have a site that, that's happening a lot, we might try to buy another cardboard dumpster and put there to make a little more capacity for that. Uh, but, uh, uh, like I said, we, we've been out of this game for a few years now. So, getting those logistics back, uh, we'll, we'll see what the dynamics are. The one, the biggest thing that concerns me is the sites being open and not manned, uh, with recycling. That, I hope, uh, that works out alright, but, um, observation tells me it, it may be a. that works out all right, but, um, observation tells me it, it may be a problem.
I did have a couple of questions along this line. Um, do you foresee the more closing of the convenience center once you commit a truck to go to the recycling center?
In closing, you mean like, uh, they fill up and?
Gate closed, cause you don't have a truck to pick up the trash.
Right, um, hopefully we can do that. Most, most time, that happens on specific dates, like Mondays, you know, if, uh, because Saturday you have one truck running and everybody takes their trash out on Saturday. So, Monday you may have sites full. Tuesday morning, Wednesday morning, Thursday morning, you don't usually see that unless there's a holiday or something. Uh, so, we want and plan a recycling route on Monday. And we would have all our resources into opening up sites as soon as we can on, uh, when you have sites open twenty-four seven for six days a week, uh, it's inevitable that they're gonna fill up at times and be closed. The difference is if they were open just forty-eight hours that week and man, people would know when they were closed. Uh, but we can't leave them open if they're full until a truck can get there to service them because unfortunately, people will throw it on the ground.
The other question, uh, have you had a chance to look at projected savings, financial savings to the county for the recycling?
I haven't had a chance, but like, like I mentioned, any diversion of material that goes to the landfill, uh, reduces, uh, what's going through the transfer station, trips to the landfill for the packer trucks, uh, the capacity that you're talking about, sites filling up, you know, that, that takes away volume that would fill a site up and puts it into the recycling bin, especially paper and plastic and stuff. Uh, so, uh, you can, you can, I can give you those numbers like at the end of the year after we've been recycling, uh, on how, how much, uh, recycle. We, we, we're dealing with thirteen thousand tons of solid waste a year. Uh, if we can recycle twenty-five percent of that would be awesome. So, you're looking at, uh, I don't know, uh, four to five thousand tons of recycling and, uh, times that by forty-seven, so, uh, it could be significant. Now, savings, it still takes manpower, fuel, trucks and logistics to take the recycling to, uh, blunt them. Uh, but we're hauling that material anyway, uh, so.
The reason I ask, I did talk to Russell County last year and they went through a recycling program.
Mm-hmm.
But their, their final analysis was it was not cost beneficial to the county, so they, I think they discontinued their program.
Now, it's, it's probably at best break even. Uh, you know, it's, it's, it's about, uh, being good stewards and, uh, what people want to do and, uh, uh, diverting that saving landfill space and, I mean, there's a lot of reasons other than bottom line learning to, to do something. So, uh, I think it's the right thing to do, uh, and, and people seem to want to be able to recycle. And, uh, uh, and Southern County has offered us a good opportunity. And, uh, you know, as technology comes along and other, other things come along, hopefully we can get to where a hundred percent of solid waste could be recycled and it doesn't take so much diesel to get rid of it.
Does one truck is all that runs on Saturday?
Mm-hmm.
How did they decide where to go?
They have a, they have a route.
Take out fourteen.
Yeah, uh, they, they do, they do two routes that they do, uh, uh, all of the, the big sites. The only ones we don't hit on Saturday is, um, like, um, Fireview Upper Fifty-Eight and some of the sites that can, it's not as busy.
Well, they do make two loads?
Mm-hmm, yeah. We, we tried the, uh, running two on Saturdays for a while, but when, when we have a driver work on Saturday, he takes the next Friday off for working on that Saturday. So, if you have two drivers working on Saturday, you got two days during that week that you either got two drivers off or a, a, a driver less. So, uh, it's better to have them, uh, just one on Saturday and, and, uh, having them during the week.
How many drivers have you got right now?
We've got, uh, five employed, uh, you know, I, I can get you that number exactly, uh, in their names. Uh, we, we have two positions that are to be filled. Now, some of the other positions also have CDLs and have, are driving for us, like the mechanic position. He's been having to drive a lot lately on routes instead of being able to concentrate just working on trucks. Uh, the, uh, solid waste manager that's usually at the transfer station has CDL and he'll make rounds, uh, so, uh.
Well, we've got four packer trucks.
We have four packer trucks and then the old one, uh, the, uh, oh eight that we bought during COVID to, to limp by, but, yeah, uh, fi- uh, five packer trucks and three roll-off trucks.
Are you looking for another driver besides the one that you had mentioned?
I will.
Cause you said that we was down to two, two drivers.
I can't, there, there's, there's still, on, on, the way that position came open, there's still, uh, we're going through a, a process, uh.
I think I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, and I don't wanna hire.
Right.
Before I know the end of that process.
Okay, thank you.
And then, then I'll advertise for it.
Seems like we owe you a, uh, member, uh, MOU for solid county recycling. Does, uh, anybody wanna make the motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Michelle makes the motion. Does anybody want a second, then?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter's second. I'll vote, uh, in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tina, we're appointments.
You have one to point that, uh, to the building code appeals board and you did not receive any applicants.
Bill or Sally, could you remind the board, um, what the building code appeals board does and how often they meet?
In the, uh, Uniform Statewide Building Code, one of the requirements, uh, is that the county has a building code board of appeals. And that's made up, uh, there's some requirements on that, who, who can be on that. It's engineers, uh, contractors, uh, tradesmen, uh, and then, you know, uh, uh, a citizen. And what that does, if the building official makes a decision on, uh, interpreting the building code, that, uh, they can, and they can resolve it through, uh, speaking with the building official, the, the permit holder or the contractor or the citizen has the right to take it to the building code board of appeals. And, uh, so, uh, they would look at it and, and not really, uh, change what the building official, uh, uh, change his authority or anything or change the code, but look at the interpretation of that code and make a re- recommendation that, uh, they, uh, that the building official is looking at it right or not. And then either the county or that person, if they didn't like that outcome, can go to the state board of appeals. Uh, but we supposed to have a local board of appeals. Now, when I was building official back in two thousand one, uh, I had them meet just to let them know who they are and what that story. I'm not sure that that's happened since and I don't think we've ever had to convene the building code board of appeals. Uh, cause we, we try to work stuff out and, and use our, our discretion and work with people and, and make sure we're doing the job right and, 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 and doing that. Uh, nevertheless, we've gotta have them in place, so, that's who they are.
All right, thank you. All right, was there another appointment?
You have one for the planning commission. Ashley Snodgrass has been serving. Uh, she did not reapply and you did not receive any applicants.
All right, I think I've got a filler in that we can use then. I'll, I'll ask around, uh, I, Mr. Stewart, I was, uh, interested in that position earlier.
Okay.
This year or maybe last, or late last year, I might be able to convince him. Thank you. Uh, county attorney's report.
I don't have anything for you today. You have my report in your packets. Happy to answer any questions.
All right, county administrator's report, all three days of it.
Right. Yeah, so I think everyone has your green sheets in your packet, but, uh, general fund balance, uh, nine million, six hundred seventy-nine thousand, fifty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. And, let's see the comparison there. And then going to the bills, we had a total claim amount of one hundred ninety-one thousand, three hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents. There were no early set bills with the closeout of the year. We just entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
I'll move.
I'll second that motion.
All right, Stephanie makes the motion. Michelle's second. All vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries?
We have a request from, uh, the Duffield days. Um, I believe the request is, well, uh, a thousand dollars, um, which, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's what we've done in the past for that. We would just need to.
All right, I'll make the motion.
I'll say.
To the fund Duffield days.
So, this will come out contingency.
Yeah. So, they give them a thousand dollars from contingency.
So, we start here, so that's, I, I got it.
Yeah, we're, we're fine on.
I know, I just, I, I'll keep up with it.
I appreciate it. Uh, so I made the motion, uh, Danny seconds. Uh, everybody, uh, vote, uh, everybody in favor vote by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries?
The, uh, we have, uh, I don't know if we want to move over this or otherwise I can present it. Uh, Mr. Ferguson was planning on coming for the, the next, uh, ask.
We can, we can hold off on it and, uh,
Let's see.
If you wanna do the, go ahead and do the county, uh, tourism report, Miss Roberts?
Yeah.
And.
One thing before we.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
One thing before we go on, we need to appoint Mr. Wilson on the regional jail board.
Okay.
They need a letter of consent saying that he is the new representative of Scott, uh, regional jail board.
All right, uh, so, in, in form of a motion, send that. Do I have a second on that? Mr. Cass still seconds. Mr. Jeter makes the motion. Everybody vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We'll send that letter.
If you need to, the information where to send it, uh, Bill has it, I don't think I have it. Ms. Patrick was requesting it.
We, we were contacted with the issue.
Right.
Okay.
How, do you have your meetings?
There are four a year, quarterly, quarterly.
The only other thing I wanted to add if I can is, uh, just a thanks to the board for hiring me. I'm glad to be here. And, uh, look forward to working with everyone and working with the citizens of Scott County. Exciting, exciting times and, um, ready to get ball rolling.
Sounds good. We've got, we've got it rolling a little bit.
Right.
Expect you to pick it up.
Here's the fire.
But, uh, we, we do appreciate you coming and, and we're glad to have, uh, Scott County. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
I noticed on our money, we, we're in pretty good shape. Had nine million surplus and we had to take out one million and four or five, uh, to keep from raising taxes and I noticed all the way around us, everybody's raising taxes, so.
Yes.
I'm glad we got by with that and didn't have to raise taxes. Cause, uh, it's taxed pretty heavy already, so. I'm really glad that we was able to do that and we're still in good shape.
And Southern County was.
Thank the board for all the hard work and the budget committee for all the work they done on it.
That's the six years since I've been on the board that we've not raised taxes.
We've actually dropped.
We've actually raised or dropped, lowered taxes one year.
Yeah, we lowered three cents on real estate.
And the statement was made that we gave ourselves a raise, I believe, last month.
Yes.
The board of supervisors in Scott County, I think it's twenty years now that they've not had a raise. So, that statement was false.
We had a, we had a chance to raise it, but the old people that was here voted it down. I done, but they did.
It wasn't, it shows how smart this bunch is. It has been twenty, around twenty years.
We still make forty-five hundred dollars and fifty-four hundred dollars a year each is all we make. For the record. Yeah, six years we've not raised taxes. It's pretty substantial.
Miss Roberts?
Mr. Westman, if I can, uh, Kevin.
Our top's Trump.
Treasurer came by yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
He had, uh, four hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars in delinquent taxes that have been paid since April sixteenth issue.
Wow, that is wonderful.
He, he said that the.
Good job, Kevin.
He said that the, uh, delinquent tax rate or number is below a million for the first time in years.
That's great to hear.
That is wonderful.
It's not earned some thousand left to collect.
Phenomenal job.
That is wonderful.
Yeah.
Since Kevin brought it by yesterday.
Phenomenal. That is amazing.
Does anybody know if he's still got some money invested where we're drawing in or?
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody know?
I don't know what that number is. I do know also to add on, um, did anybody catch what the, even though I don't like that money that we get from the casino? Cause I feel like it's bad, but the month of May, the month of May, the fourteen, is it fourteen locality or fourteen entities? We will get ninety-eight thousand dollars from that casino fund for that one month. And if we continue down that path, we've underestimated what we're gonna get from that casino money. But that's good. I'm glad we did that, but just for the month of May, that's, it was ninety-eight thousand. Like I said, I don't like that money and I, it is what it is. I know we have to do good with it.
But we'll take it.
We'll take it.
We'll take your dirty money.
We'll take that dirty money.
We appreciate that.
We appreciate that. We appreciate that, yes.
All right, third top's top charm, let's try this.
Well, good morning, good morning, good to see everybody again. I have a little presentation like I did last time, so I'm gonna wait for that to load and, um, kinda give you a little recap. Give you a little recap of, um, what's been going on the last couple of months in tourism and kinda what I'm looking forward to for the next couple of months in tourism. So. There we go. Um, just to kinda recap some things that have been going on in the county, obviously spring and summer are really big, um, in terms of things that we've got going on, some recent county events, of course, we celebrated the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Daniel Boone Expedition at Natural Tunnel. We also had Kids Fishing Day at Natural Tunnel, Nicholsville Days, Gate City Jeep Jam, Appalachia Rising, um, or Appalachia Rising at the Carter Fold, we had the Chamber of Commerce Small Business Lunch, Virginia State Championship Horse Show at Scott County Horse Park, so there are a lot of things, and that's just kind of a snippet of some things going on, a lot of things that have been going on in the county in the last couple of months. New businesses, which is really exciting for us to see, we have Orange Blossom Bakery and Creamery, which just opened in downtown Gate City back in late March, first of April, Heritage Table, which is slated to open in July in Nicholsville, which is a restaurant, Back Lane, which is in downtown Gate City, and then this isn't a new thing, but the reopening of the Fort Blackmore Pool, so those are some pretty, um, impressive things that have opened in the, in the last couple of, um, months, and of course, they're really all based on tourism, so that's really exciting to see. We've also had a couple of really cool notable mentions, um, you know, obviously we've got some other things that have popped up in our media, but these are just some of the ones that I wanted to bring to your attention. King's Sport Times News did a story on us, um, for tourists and Airbnbs in, in our community, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes, thanks to Mr. Steele. PBS Appalachia did a sto- uh, story on Scott County, which they shared on their social media posts, and then Chef Carla Hall, she is a TV personality slash author of, um, several cookbooks, she's been on the, um, oh gosh, I forget the name of it, baking championship shows on, um, TV, she came to the Carter Fold, she's got a large, very large social media following, um, has appeared on Good Morning America, a couple of other things, and so she did a little story on the Carter Fold, which shared, she shared on her social thing, so I thought that was a really cool little thing. Um, these are our social and our web statistics, which I'm super excited about, as I, as you all know, I talked about this last time, um, aside from our traditional marketing that was set in place with our bounty trail, which ended July, or I'm sorry, June thirtieth, so we had that bounty trail grant, um, that we had Pam secured for an entire year, that ended on June thirtieth, so we rode out our, um, paid advertisements with them, but aside from their earmarked bounty trail, um, advertising, I've not spent any money on advertising on our social media pages, so this has been one hundred percent organic growth. Um, and you can see our numbers for the time period of March twenty-eighth, so the last, the end of March till June thirtieth, we're up by fifty percent in our views, so we're over a million views in this timeframe, and we're over two point five million views since I started in October. So our social media is growing exponentially, all of our numbers are in the positive, we're up seventy four, uh, seventy-four percent on our growth in terms of followers to our pages in the last couple of months, um, interactions are up by sixty-five percent, so these are pretty astronomical numbers considering that all of this is organic growth, none of this has been paid advertisements. On the right, you'll see our web statistics, and this is based on what corporate marketing came up with, our website growth in the last, um, for the month of May, that's, that's, um, our month of May, um, statistics, our website visits are up by forty-three percent and can't see what that last little engaged sessions, so the engaged sessions are also up, that means the amount of time that someone is engaging with the website is up by forty-nine percent, so we're seeing a lot of growth, um, corporate marketing, again, handled the bounty trail campaign, so what we did was, and I'll show it in just a second, we ran a two-minute video in the Lamsgard Visitor Center up in Virginia, um, as well as we had a one-month Facebook ad, um, that ran, that showed, and I'll show you the statistics in a minute, that showed, um, you know, our bounty trail stuff, that was paid for with the bounty trail grant, so aside from that, all of the growth that I'm seeing on our social stats, um, is one hundred percent organic with no paid, um, which is great. So I've got a few examples of some of the things I wanted to show you for our social media posts, I feel like this has been a really good, um, catalyst for growth for us, I think it's also based on the comments and the feedback that I'm getting, I think this is also good for our local businesses, which is also my, my number one goal, is that we continue to support our local businesses, so I'm gonna show you a few examples of some of the posts that I've done, if this works. Option, but also to be able to talk about ways that we could market, support and expand the business with us not really having a, a, um, hotel per se, our Airbnb and short-term rental community is huge, and we obviously wanna support those folks and let that continue growing, because when people do come to stay in the region, we wanna offer places for them to stay. And one of the things that we discovered in this meeting is that, you know, it's not just people coming to stay or coming to visit Scott County, there are people that are coming and staying in Scott County that are visiting Russell County and Wise County and Lee County, and so we wanna continue to be that premier, um, lodging center for Airbnbs, um, for people traveling to the region, and so one of the things that we were able to do out of this meeting is I contacted Mr. Steele and he came up and did a, um, article on our tourism, our, our Airbnb communities, and a, was able to kinda follow a couple of the owners out to their homes, get pictures of them and put that on, um, in the newspaper, which was great, so we're hoping to kinda expand on that, continuing to promote our Airbnb owners. Something else to look forward to is our Tourism Appreciation Dinner, I'm going to have that this year in, uh, the end of July, so it's gonna be kind of an annual meeting of our tourism entities and our community leaders to kind of first and foremost thank them for investing in tourism in this, in, in our region, but also provide collaborative opportunities and support that community, because one of the things I discovered with my, um, Airbnb group and then the entrepreneur group that I had situated back in, um, winter, was that anytime you can get all these people together in one room, it's a good thing, cause they're able to talk, they're able to discuss, they're able to collaborate, um, a very prime example of this is that, um, the new Nicholsville Restaurant, the Homestead, um, table, we're gonna host, uh, well, I'll show you, I think each one of the board members should have gotten this in their email at this point, um, an invitation to come out to the tourism dinner, um, it's gonna be hosted. Things, this one being, uh, one of these, um, things I'm looking forward to, so. So do you have any questions?
We've got a new business, they've been there hardly a year and it's Redstone out there, Natural Tunnel.
Yes, I, I, I have reached out to them to do a video on them, um, and originally they had said, hang on, um, we're not really sure if we're gonna stay open. And originally they had said, hang on, we're not really sure if we're going to stay open. And so I think back in the late early spring, they were moving towards shutting down.
It was a touch and go, but I think it started.
It is, and so Candy and I have spoken and she's on my agenda of places to shoot this month.
A lot of people don't know it's open and anything will help them.
Absolutely, well, like I said, she and I have been in touch and we've actually not nailed down a date. But on that end of the county, I still have the Mountain Java Coffee to do. I have Redstone, I was going to do Duffield Lumber and then there's another one that I had on my calendar for down there and I can't remember who it was at the time. But yes, so that's, that's all on the agenda. Any other questions?
For the social presence, you said that that was increasing. Are you tracking like how many people click off from the social to the Scott County website? And like how many were feeding into actual listings?
You know, that, that's a great question. Rain or corporate marketing has been tracking that. But one of the things I have completely forgotten to do is to share, and Rain has told me this before, to share our website with each one of our reels. Because we are getting so many views on some of these videos, it would be a natural thing to do. And I will take full responsibility for forgetting to do that. But yes, that has helped with the increase. You know, seasonally, we have an uptick in website visits just because people are traveling. But yes, that has certainly helped. We've not, I've not tracked those numbers lately, but in the past, being able to kind of see that some of that stuff is coming from social media for sure. Any other questions? Thank you.
And we had this person here, but, oh, there he is. All right. We're going back to point twelve B sub item two. And Virginia ban on expanded polystyrene school exemption requests. Mr. Ferguson, how you doing this morning?
Good, how are you all today?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hopefully you received a copy of the letter of the request exemption along with the document that came from the Department of Ed as relates to the ban on the use of styrofoam within the schools. Unless there's any particular questions in regards to the document, I'm going to ask that you would grant the school division a year's exemption of this. I think it's, you can only ask for the year at a time, the way the document reads. You probably have noticed some billboards, stop the ban. And probably I think it's written out the word stop. And see, I think there's one out here across from where Thriftway used to be. It took me a while to figure it out, but that's what it is. It's a container that's opened up, it's spelled the word stop, but that's what it, as it relates to. This went into effect as of yesterday. Scott County Public Schools participates in the Southern Appalachian Mountain Co-op. As do many of the other divisions throughout this part of the state. And as of right now, they don't have a good substitute at this time. We do have these products on hand and I laughingly joked about it. We'll still have to throw them away anyway if we can't use them. But anyway, I'm asking for an exemption and I have to, so we'll, and it has to come from the locality.
All right, do I hear a motion for this exemption for the school system?
So moved.
Jeter moves.
I'll second it.
Michelle seconds. Everybody vote in favor by way of saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our motion carries.
Thank you all so much, have a good day.
You have a good day.
All right, moving right along on item fourteen. Supervisors comments, requests and recommendations. I would just like to take a second and thank all the staff that have worked so hard during this transition period. Bill, Bart, Tina, Amy, thank you all. Y'all have really held this together and Sally too, of course. Y'all, y'all have really held this counting together through this time of transition and we really appreciate that as a board.
Oh, yes.
And we look forward to seeing what all we can do in this new phase. So we really appreciate it, thank you all. It's, I know it's been tough. It's not been the easiest six months to have done this or it's probably been more than six months and it's probably been like eight.
No. Ten, three, three years.
It seems longer to me. There has been a lot of things going on and you all have handled it exceptionally and juggled everything. Thank you all so much, we really appreciate it. All right, anyone else?
I do have my usual, I'll tell Mr. Wilson, I do report monthly on the VDOT that day in the county. Anyone in the county that's having issues with the roads can call me. But first of all, something that was in the Kingsport Times on June the seventh. The report on Appalachian Regional Commission, ARC, twenty twenty-six designation, Scott County was declared a at-risk, which is unchanged from previous years. That does qualify for seventy percent ARC matching funds and this would be for water and sewer projects. So this would be more so towards the PSA, but localities. Scott County had a three-year unemployment rate of three point three percent per capita, per person income of twenty-five thousand two fifty-three. And I'm thinking that's eighteen years or older, I'm not sure what the criteria is for that. I'm thinking that's adult eighteen. Poverty rate is currently at eighteen percent. Within this designation, Van Gannon is what they call a TRACT, T-R-A-C-T location. And that has been the case before. They're economically distressed, so they qualify for a higher percentage of grants. The next item, we, the teaching supervisors, I think got an email back from John Kilgore regarding enterprise zone and how it affects small businesses in the county. He said contacts being made with small businesses and towns on incentive notification. However, he's getting limited responses. He's currently looking at small business participation, retail and tourism requires two new jobs or a fifty thousand dollar investment. And they would qualify at that point after review of the tax incentive, tax incentives. And also he wanted to make everyone aware, if you're a small business, you can contact his office and get more information on incentives and low interest loans. This is the VDOT portion that I usually do each month. The Nicholsville Pedestrian Bridge has loose metal, it's been reported to VDOT, they've done a site visit. There's no immediate safety issue. The schedule, they're scheduling a bucket truck and repair this month. Antler Springs Road, drain pipe is needing replacement. And the bus turnaround that Mr. Settino is providing to the school system, that is going to be done the week of July the fourteenth. They're moving the big excavator from Hiltons once they finish up over there on some work down to Antler Springs Road. Mr. Semper wanted me to update the mowing schedule. The primary will be completed on the second round by July the fourth. So this week, second round on primary roads. On secondary, this week, Twin Springs, May, Stanley Town. He's estimating they're currently at eighty-five percent completion in county and will be a hundred percent by mid-July. And I was going to discuss the thing we did earlier about the motion, but that's been taken care of. This, someone brought this to my attention this week on the transfer station requiring cash. They asked if there was any way that we could implement a debit or credit card.
There's probably a way, Mr. Skeen, but there's usually a fee associated with that, that's three to five percent. We can look into that. In the last year or so, we've got Wi-Fi at the transfer station. Improving our internet camera capabilities. That could be an option. People can set up accounts if they, if they come here quite a bit. I know the contractors do. They set up the account down here in county in their build based on the tickets coming from the transfer station. But I understand that, I wouldn't have cash either.
Well, this guy did not.
If I rolled up our, yeah.
But his friend did, so he's able, he had already unloaded when he realized he had to pay the cash, so.
Yeah, we can look into that, there may be some mobile app or something that's more, that's simple that we can do. It's just that, that the, I know we've talked about that with building bits down at the animal shelter for adoption fees and things like that. There's always seem to be some fees involved.
It's like three percent most of the time.
It is.
Logistics that, and what, what do we do with that two percent? How do we put that through the system? It doesn't go to the, you know, the revenue line for the transfer station and somewhere else. So that would be a good thing, we'll look into.
Thank you. For your information, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Jeter, myself and I heard it from Nicholsville, Ferguson, met with the superintendent at the regional jail in Duffield. And he suggested ways that we can reduce our cost in the legal process and transferring inmates back and forth. And I did run into Judge Kilgore at Thig City last week and I mentioned this to him. Of course, he likes to see the inmates in front of him live. So that's the issue. For us, I think it's saving money, which, but he's open to talk. And I told him, once you've got settled in, that we'd like to meet with him, he said that would be fine. We had had Mr. France in with Recreation Department last month and we had asked him to look into the, I think, third request, extended hours at the golf course, has anything happened with that?
I haven't heard anything back from Derek.
This was extended hours during December months to try to increase revenue. School funding, Chairman Manus and I met with school super, this we discussed during budget, but not actually live to the public. Chairman Manus and I met with school superintendent, Mr. Ferguson to discuss contributing three hundred thousand dollars to offset the county's contribution to the life-saving crews. And as you know, we ended up with two hundred twenty-five thousand. And this came through the back end to the county's general fund and it comes from the difference in the forecasting number of students versus actual. And there were sixty-eight more students budgeted this year than actually had. So that led to excess. And my understanding of that has not happened before, that we've received anything back, that there's no reconciliation. So my recommendation yearly, I think March is the date that number, we see that number. My recommendation to the board is that we review that at the end of that period. And if there's excess money, then discuss bringing it back into our general fund. This year, I think he estimated two twenty-five or somewhere in that ballpark. That's where that came from.
Just to clarify, Mr. Skeen, that that money was never in the school's possession.
No.
It was ju, if, if, it was in the general fund and remained in the general fund. It's just they didn't draw down that much less. So it's not money that the school system had and then gave back to us. It's money that they did draw down from our general fund.
But as far as checking it every year, there have been years that we've owed them extra money.
Yes.
So it goes both ways.
Yeah. When they're underestimated, then we add to their budget. So I'm saying that when they overestimate, it needs to come back in. So that's my point with that. School funding, on the news recently, our bordering counties, Wise and Lee in Virginia and Hawkins County in Tennessee have looked to cut the school budgets. Scott County budget's roughly over seventy million, a little bit over seventy million. It's a third of our Scott County's total budget. We have a similar budget plus seventy million as Wise County and they have two thousand more students than we do. This year, there are four hundred twenty-one Tennessee students attending Scott County schools tuition-free. It's costing the system one point five million and the Scott County taxpayers three thousand dollars per student. Some of the numbers that, on the border, elementary schools, Huma, thirty-four percent are Tennessee students. Weber City, thirty-one percent. Gate City, twenty-two percent. Gate City Middle, twenty-one percent. And those numbers are growing while our local Virginia residents, students are declining. There's also been a request or in the process of requesting four million dollar grants for Huma and Weber City schools to add office space.
Not that the county was paying anything for.
Ferguson said there was no commitment on the part of the county. There's, the school system is the county's largest employer and there's one employee, school employee per five students. That sounds a high number. Currently, there's five hundred ninety-three full-time employees and forty-eight part-time. It's Mr. Ferguson's opinion that the additional Tennessee, Tennessee students benefit the Scott County taxpayers by reducing the composite index percentage and lowering the county taxes. I need to get a better understanding on the composite index, I don't fully understand it. But if that is the case, I think we need to recruit more Tennessee students if the taxpayer benefit.
I can give you that information.
Okay, good.
Stephanie has a really nice presentation that she can email you where she's done the research and shown how, how it works and what components of it work. Or maybe we can just do that next meeting.
I think it's a big part of our budget and I'd like to share that with everybody, I think it's a good idea.
Stephanie, Stephanie's got a great understanding.
Sure, if you, or do you want to go through it? Do we have time?
Yeah.
You want to pull it up?
I say, I say go for it.
Well, we're kind of extended now, can we do it next meeting?
We've been, we've been to meetings.
It won't take me twenty minutes, fifteen minutes to go through it.
Okay, go ahead.
Let's go.
Yep.
Can you pull it up?
Can you pull that up?
Let's, let's take a short recess while we get that set up and we'll be back here in fifteen minutes, say ten forty-five.
Sounds great.
I don't think it's about recruiting Tennessee students, but it is, but it does, what I pulled together and shown is how it does affect our local composite index. I wouldn't necessarily say we should recruit. I wouldn't necessarily say we should recruit.
Wait, okay.
Good. Alright, so I wanted to, I'm gonna caveat this with saying that all of the information that I have used in this presentation, I had full front the Department of Education's website, every bit of this, except for a few of my assumptions. So with that, let's look at the local composite index and how it's calculated and what it means to us as a county. So, you know, we've talked about this for a while, so my hope is that you'll see what I see whenever we get through this. Because when you actually plug the numbers in and do the math, that composite index is affected significantly by the reduction of Tennessee students. So the first part here, this is how the calcu- this is how the calculation is done. This is done, it's based on the three indicators of the locality's ability to pay. So it takes into account the taxable retail sales, the adjusted gross income of the county, and the true value of real property in the county. And if you go to their website, go to the next.
Now is this just the, the three factors which, is that just Scott County residents or has it taken into account all the students and their parents?
It takes into, I'll show you. Whenever you pull this up, I'll, let me get this thing to click forward. How do you go to the next one, Bill?
Little button, not working.
Mm-mm.
It'll look like a position.
Why it's just working?
Just clicking through it's fine. Just clicking through it's fine. So when you go to their website, and this is actually one of the spreadsheets that is available for you to download. You download this spreadsheet, I chose Scott County, and it actually gives me these numbers. And you can see when the, it's off, it's based off of the 2021 is the base year for all of the indicators. Now that changes, but they, they update this as it changes. So they'll do this, I can't remember exactly when, how often they do that. I can't remember how often they do that, but they do the, the base year and then they'll do the calculation and then, and then that, those are, those are standard numbers, right? So these numbers are weighted and multiple calculations are gonna be shown on the next slide. The calculations are given on the website, like I said. Four steps to calculating this. The average daily membership composite index, the com- the per capita composite index, combining of the two indices to arrive at the ability to pay percentage. So those again, that's how it's weighted. The true value is fifty percent, the adjusted gross income's forty, and the taxable retail sales is ten. But also, each locality's index is adjusted to maintain an overall statewide local share of forty-five percent. The local share is forty-five and the state share is fifty-five. But I'll show you how I arrived at that. Next. So that's the, well before you click, well, sorry, that's okay. Before you click, this is actually this year's. So our composite index for the final twenty twenty-four, twenty-six years. So they do it for two years. It's calculated and it's, and that number is what that number is for two years. So for twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, technically, three, well, three years. But, right?
No, it's for two.
It's for two, so it's twenty-four and twenty-five, and now calculate again in twenty-six. I did it right? I'm a little nervous.
It was.
Just because.
It's just that it's.
Okay. Oh, perfect. Okay. Anybody have any questions about this so far? This is gonna be a lot of information on this next slide. Oh, boom. Forward, ha!
There you go.
So here is the calcula- the calculation steps given off of the website. This is how they arrive at that number. There's a lot of calculations in there to arrive at each one of those, but I've, I've worked those out. I input, and I've input all of the information based off of Scott County's numbers. So that's the first one, the calculation of the average daily membership composite index. The second step is the per capita composite index. So there's the steps for that. And I just, like I said, I just plugged those numbers in that were given off of the website. This is the third. This is where you combine the indices to give us the ability to pay. And down there, that final composite index, remember I said earlier, it's forty-five percent, so there's where that forty-five percent comes into play. So there's, I think they said eighteen seventy-two, I got eighteen seventy-eight, and that made me just a rounding thing. But, so eighteen point seventy-eight percent is what our county's ability to pay is right now. So.
You're saying for each of those students that if they cost the county three thousand dollars, we're only paying five hundred and some odd dollars?
Which I think it's a, yes.
It's, it's probably a little bit more than that, but it's a rough.
Yeah, in that neighborhood, yes. So less than twenty percent.
Okay.
Right? So using those same constants, and the only variable I changed was excluding those five hundred students. So if you, if the, if the school board, which we can't, charge tuition, if the school board decided to implement a tuition, those students do not get counted in our average daily membership. They're excluded from that. So they take, that takes off that five hundred. I, I said five hundred, you said four twenty-one earlier. I'll just use five hundred as a round number. There is what it is with the thirty-three hundred students. That includes both Tennessee and Virginia students. The second number is where I changed that to where if we were to lose, technically speaking, we wouldn't be losing them. We cannot count, they cannot be counted toward our average daily membership because they are paying tuition.
So in other words, what we need to do then, by what you're saying, is tell the Tennessee kids, I want them to come to Scott County and come to school because we're making money by doing.
We're not making money.
Well.
We're not making money.
How, if we're not making it, it has to be costing us then. So, I mean, you just said that it wouldn't get to tuition. So let's tell them, come free. We're not gonna give them, charge you no tuition because we're getting it from the state.
I don't think we can ever get that number to zero. If, if we could get it to zero, then sure. Sure, that, I think that would be a, something that you could do, but there's a, always a point of diminishing returns.
If the Tennessee students stopped coming.
Okay, if they stop coming. What does that mean then?
That's what that means.
That means that.
That index would go up to twenty point two zero nine five, almost two percentage points, or a little over two percentage.
Can we explain it? Are we making money or are we spending money from it?
Well, I didn't, I didn't put this together for us to have the discussion of making money or, I put this together to make, to show you what the implication would be should they charge you tuition, is what I put this together for, to show the.
I'm kinda like Donald Trump. I mean, the way I see it, I mean, the Tennessee, uh, the figures I got is ninety-eight hundred dollars a year if you go to, to the Dobbs meeting. So, I mean, if they're charging us a tuition, I think that we should charge them a tuition. And, I mean, it's kinda like the tires. I mean, I can't see somebody getting, paying fifty percent, then we're gonna do them and let them have that ten percent. Now, that's the way I see it. I don't know how the rest of y'all see it, but if you can explain it to me, I'm more set to listen.
Again, like I said, I'm just showing you that if they charged tuition, what that effect that has on us, not necessarily.
Okay, explain it.
If they charge tuition, it goes back to the state, it don't go to the county. If they charge.
Yeah, if they charge a tuition, it goes straight to the school system, not to us.
Hey, I believe you said you had a better explanation on the next one.
Okay, anyway, so there's, if those A D Ms lowered. Okay, so here, there is a lot of information on here, I know that. But again, this is the basic A for people, what you're talking about Danny, was that ninety, five hundred dollars or something?
Ninety-eight's what I meant to.
Okay, well, I've got ninety-five.
Okay, we're close.
The, so this is where, Eddie, you were talking about earlier about the March thirty-one deadline and those types of things. Well, this is, this comes into play here too. So Scott County is projected for twenty twenty-six to have thirty-eight hundred and eighty-six students. If Scott County school systems charge a tuition for the five hundred, they're removed from that calculation. So right now, it's ninety-nine, what is that, ninety-eight?
Ninety-four.
Ninety-five, or which one?
The first number.
Ninety-eight, ninety-four.
So that's where that number comes into play. They adjust, they say that thirty-eight eighty-six is what they base that number on. So that's the cost per pupil right there, ninety-eight hundred dollars right now. If they are removed because of the tuition, they're also removed from this number here. So that would reduce that projection down to thirty-three. Costing, you see the other numbers don't increase, um, but the cost per pupil goes up because the affected, or the average daily membership goes down.
Right, so you're saying, uh, if you look at that per pupil amount for projected twenty-six, that's ninety-five eighty-nine down there at the bottom. And then if the state, uh, moved our composite index up, that would go to twelve thousand one hundred seventy-eight.
Yes.
So it looks like that does diminish, but there is, to the point of like recruiting Tennessee students, there is a point of diminishing returns, and we're probably approaching that at some point. We'd, we'd have to do kind of a calculation out to see like where that would be, but.
To know what that number would be.
Yeah.
Now, I remember.
Again, let me, let me go on real quick before we, let me, go real quick. So this year, this is the basic A portion of the calculation. The basic A total that the county was required was fifty-nine hundred and, five million.
Nine hundred eight thousand, nine hundred fifty-nine.
Yes. So if we applied that next year with those same figures, there's the difference that the county owes with five hundred less students, but they're still here, and tuition.
So we would increase in the local share. It would go to seven million, four hundred fifty-three, nine hundred eighty-two.
Yes, our local share goes up, one and a half million dollars.
Now, we're just talking state here, right, not federal?
Right, just state money.
If you take the total amount the school system gets, from state, federal, and local, and divide that by the number of students, it's around eighteen thousand dollars.
Think so, yeah.
Actually, it's closer to twenty thousand.
Twenty, yeah, if you take the total amount.
Seventy-one million divided by thirty-two hundred students.
I, I just, I just have a problem in that, and I've been out of school system a long time, but I do know that at one time, there had to be a written reciprocal agreement between states for kids to go back and forth. Now, you know, if we send them over there to ten thousand dollars approximately a year, and they come over here and it's, it's nothing. I don't know anybody that signed a reciprocal agreement agreeing to that. We've got so many kids coming over here. Now, I think we even sent cars over to Tennessee to bring them over here now. So evidently, uh, I, I kinda got a problem with that too. And other factors that, and, and I've tried to stay out of this a lot. The other things that people have, have talked to me about is those students that come from Tennessee over here, they're competing with our students for valedictorian, salutatorian, which, you know, uh, college scholarships and everything are tied to that. And it's taking positions in Scott County, in the school system away from our county students. Uh, and, and sports is, should be secondary to this, but they're coming over and taking spots away from our kids. You know, there's different ways to look at it, but you look at the, at one time, people would say, but we're giving back so much federal money. We're not. Local, we pay more local than the feds send down to Virginia. I, this, that's just looking at a part of it. I agree, you know, this may look good, but.
But that only, this, this only looks at what we're responsible for. That's all I was looking at, is what the county is responsible for, not, you know, because the schools, the school board does their own budget, right? They've got their own, you know, and, and for us, we have to look at it strictly from the, the money side, in my opinion, because we don't have any control over what the school board sets as a tuition or anything. If they were to do that, this would be the implication.
Yeah, so we can't even do anything about this, is what you're saying.
No, no, that's basically what I'm saying.
I think we can. All the other counties around us are. I mean, they're, they're all discussing the budgets.
The, the Board of Supervisors itself cannot, but the, it would have to come from the school.
School board, yes.
There was also a, a discussion a couple of years ago, it involved Terry, uh, Terry Kilgore and, and the superintendent and everyone, I think, and it was talking about charging tuition versus charging price, and then admission fee. If you, it's different, and I don't, I couldn't tell you now because it's been a few years ago. There's a difference in charging a tuition and charging an, an admission fee.
Right.
Right, 'cause we wasn't that way a year ago, y'all correct me, and said do not call it tuition. I think Rita might have been the one, and I can't remember.
She was involved in it, Terry and.
Right. Now, but it's still a way that she worded it instead of calling it tuition. That way you got to keep the money in the county instead of, like Jeter said, sending it back to the state. But it's one, two ways. It's costing you money or you're making money. It can't, it can't be no in-betweens. It's one of the two ways. So is it making you money or is it costing you money?
There's a whole lot involved, but it's not got anything to do with us. We can't.
That's what I was gonna say. You know, the thing that affects us, and that's why, you know, again, I'll pop that back on there. The only thing that we can, that we as a board can and should look at is what the, what could be the implication should they decide to do that. That's what's the implication. You know, if they, if they, if they so choose to do a tuition, then that's the effect it's gonna have on the county. You know, we don't have any control over them setting that tuition or what that tuition even needs to be. Um, but I'm just, I just wanted to show what the effect would be if that occurred. I'm not saying it's right, I'm not saying it's wrong, I'm not saying anything that way. All I'm saying is, these are, these are actual projections based off of what the Virginia Department of Education website says is the local composite index calculations. That's.
To me, it's, I can't get it clear in my mind how we, our composite index, and y'all help me, how our composite index is based on our people in Scott County, their ability to pay, uh, their, their income, uh, the personal property tax, and one more factor in Scott County. But then we're bringing five hundred kids over here whose parents are not counted into that for their composite index. There's gotta be, there's a problem with that somewhere, and I don't know where it is.
I think you hit on a good point.
I can't, I, I can't figure, it takes somebody beyond me to figure that.
Another thing we haven't talked about is dual enrollment. Those students also qualify for dual enrollment with the community college. That's a little different topic, but it's still a cost somewhere.
I agree, it's probably still a cost. The only thing that I wanted to show with this was how this calculation works.
I appreciate that, and I'm gonna look at it further. Could you send email this to us? Because, you know, it's, it's pretty deep, and I need to, but I appreciate the fact that you took time to do that.
Yeah, but unless any of us are planning on running for school board, uh, and doing something about it, there's really not anything we can do.
Are you saying this board doesn't, cannot take action on the total budget for the school system?
You could, you could trim things from, or you could cut things from the budget, sure, um, a lot of those optional things. But I don't think you would have the board, the full board's support on that. That, actually, I, I know the full board will support that.
Which full board are you talking about?
Our full board.
Well, we, I don't think we're there yet. I mean, we started the discussion, which I appreciate, but this may be a year-long process.
Sure, but.
But it is a big part of our budget, and it's growing. They've had a seventy percent increase in the last five or six years in their budget. And when you have a cost per, one employee per five students and twenty thousand cost per student, that's pretty, that's getting up there.
That also counts janitors and stuff like that.
All full-time, full-time.
School bugs, drivers.
No, now they're part-time. It's full-time, five to one full-time students.
Well, I'll tell you the way I see it, I don't think it's right that the people that's on the school board, uh, is usually being employed by the school system. I don't think that's, that's a conflict of interest to me with, uh, with you being a teacher, principal, or something, and then you're on the school board. So you know how they're gonna vote. You're gonna vote for whatever they need. I don't think but one person's on the board that ain't being employed by the county.
That, that's probably true, uh, but at the same time, unless we're planning, and someone in here is planning on running, there's really not anything we can do as a Board of Supervisors.
No.
I think Mr. Ricky has said before. Right.
Well, I thought Mr. uh, Mr. Van Ness, if you recall, when we were sitting with Mr. Ferguson, he had concerns about us cutting his budget this year. So he's telling us, you can affect my budget, and you're saying you can't.
Yes, but the things that we, we have the power to cut are things that you do not wanna, or I don't wanna cut for the students of this county.
Do you wanna look at this last slide? When you talked about those discretionary funds last meeting, Mr. Steen, these are those, those discretionary funds. So these are the extras that you spoke about. So this, the instructional specialist, I put a, a little link up here where I get this information. Um, it's all from the website. The Scott Schools tells you which one, tells, talks about the instructional specialist. But I want you to look at this bottom number. We contribute sixteen percent, and the state gives us eighty-four percent of that total, of those total discretionary, as you said, line items. Those are things you would cut. So for every sixteen dollars you cut out of that budget, they're gonna lose eighty-four from the state. But I, again, I don't, those are things that, I feel like these programs here, I would never be in favor of cutting any of this. I don't see it as discretionary.
Yeah, the biggest one there, the, oh, let's see, supplemental payments, a little food, that is for school lunches, math readings, instructional specialists, uh, foster care, S O L algebra, and then the school breakfast.
You mentioned student, uh, teacher ratio earlier, five to one?
No, it's not student teacher, that's employee student. The student teachers, like eleven to one, fourteen to one, fifteen.
But employer to.
That's employee to student.
Okay.
That's total, full-time, total full-time employees versus total students. The student teacher ratio ranges anywhere from like, I think, eight to one, up to fourteen to one.
I don't know if that's true for Duffield because my daughter's class at least has twenty-two students in it. Uh, and I think that's for every class in that grade. And I think the class ahead of her had, was actually bigger than her class.
The U S News and World Report does a student teacher ratio for elementary schools.
It'd be interesting to compare those figures to other counties around us.
But, but once again, unless we're on the school board, there's really not anything we can do.
The, and that's, again, I, I, I didn't put this together for us to have, you know, I, I did this for our information so that we have a better understanding of how this is calculated and what that potential. So that we have a better understanding of how this is calculated, and what that potential impact might be. If the school board chose to go that way, because if they choose to go that way, then we have no choice. We have to abide by those, by those figures, you know, and I mean, like I said, my assumption was five hundred students. If they charged a tuition, that's the, that's the difference. Again, I'm not, I'm not saying one way or another, catch that mic? I'm not saying one way or the other, I did this for an information, so that to kind of help us, help educate us, because I wanted to know myself. I couldn't figure it out, you know, just somebody telling me something, so I can't, I can't go off of that, so curiosity got to me and. I had to spend a week on this.
I think I speak for the whole board when I say we appreciate your curiosity here.
I was, I was very curious.
Kind of starts a discussion process, Duffield's fourteen to one ratio.
I don't think.
That was U S News and World Report's.
I bet they don't have the right numbers on that, because right now, it's.
I think, I think you're no more than that kids in certain classrooms.
Dunedin's eight to one, Hilton's nine to one. Nicholsville fourteen to one.
Is it, you feel like there's only nine students a class up in there in Hiltons?
That's on average.
Is there more?
You what?
Do you think there's more than nine students per class in Hiltons?
Per class, I'm sure, I'm sure, I don't think that's correct.
I know some kids, B C D said they did have no more than twelve kids in a class.
For Jason Smith, give it the real number, because I think U S News and World Report's gonna.
Yeah, they have, they may have some wrong numbers that get reported to the state.
I think they have assumption numbers, they don't have actual figures.
And every student's not the same, you, you've got students that require special needs and special attention. That a teacher has to mix in with the other kids and give a lot of time, most of the teachers don't have teacher days. And even though they might have twelve kids in a class, they could have four of them that takes ninety percent of the time while they're kind of teach the others, S O L things.
So, if you go to cut.
Just the numbers doesn't tell the whole story about.
It doesn't.
Yeah, and those math and reading preparations, they do school, they do early morning tutoring sessions with kids, and things like that, I know that.
Those are, and that's what I keep seeing, is that is one is, you know, if we're talking about the discretionary stuff again.
Instead of.
Those are the things that I feel are absolutely necessary for the success of any of these kids. You start cutting any of that right there, I mean, I, I couldn't lay my head down at night if we did, I'm gonna be honest with you.
I mean, just looking at school lunches.
And looking at, looking at the county as a whole, and what impact and what effect that has on these kids. If you start pulling out, if you say cut out, if we, if we chose to reduce that second column there, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. I mean, infrastructure, or, let's see, what is that one, the at-risk students, you're gonna cut that, those programs out? If you go to cutting the early reading intervention specialist out, I mean, I.
I think the, the biggest problem that a lot of people see is they don't see any return on this, and it's a long return kind of thing.
It is, it's a, it's an initial investment, the long, long, I mean, you never know what kind of impact this is gonna have on these kids.
Well, you know.
I don't, I might aggress, but I, again, like I said, this is just for us to look at and kind of. Again, I didn't take this and try to sway one way or the other, I just wanted to see the impact of what those five hundred students, if we lost, if the school board chose to do that. What that, what impact that has on the county, because those are the numbers we need to know. Because we, we can't, we can't tell them to charge a tuition, or even charge an admission fee, or anything like that. I mean, this right here is state mandated. It's a requirement, I mean, we don't have a choice.
It, and it may, you know, help us in understanding, but then again, the taxpayers need to realize it's their money.
Yes.
It's their money.
Yeah, that's the whole point, it's our neighbors. The whillas, the whillas that are barely paying their electric bill.
That don't want to pay for the electricity.
They're having to pay more of their income each year for education, and I think there's gotta be a cap on it somewhere.
But would that, would they be served by starting to have to pay their kids lunches?
The problem I have, Wise County, their cost per student's about thirteen thousand, hours is twenty, a lot of discrepancy.
Why do you say twenty, I didn't get twenty?
It's a total budget divided by the total students. We've got thirty-two hundred students, seventy-two million dollar budget.
I don't think that gives you an accurate.
Well, it gives you a comparison equally with other counties, apples to apples.
How much, well, anyways, we, we can't do anything really about that.
No.
But I appreciate the fact that we're discussing, and I'm sure we'll be doing this during.
Yeah, any additional supervisor comments?
I do have a couple of things.
Okay.
Okay, well, any more for me real quick, and I'm gonna shut her down.
We're good, thank you, Stan.
Just send, just send us a copy, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You did a good job, thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thanks for taking your time out.
We, we talked about this earlier, you know, maybe, go ahead. In our budget discussion, the mountaintop timber restitution, for the public's knowledge, we got paid reimbursement of fifty-one thousand dollars to the Scott County Treasurer. I'd make a recommendation, we, the county paid two hundred fifty thousand reimbursement to the tobacco commission. As a result of the failure of mountaintop timber, we guaranteed a loan to the tobacco commission. Restitution check came in, fifty-one thousand, I recommended to go back to the taxpayer in the general fund. And the board has decided to direct that to the E D A Department.
Mr. Skeen, just for clarity, you also voted on to do that as well?
I did, I wanted to make the public aware of that, but I would like to make a motion that we bring that back into the general fund, which is where it originated. As far as the payment to, to the tobacco commission, and if the E D A at some point has a need for it, then direct it in that direction. I'll save it there.
I don't think there was any, I don't think there was any explanation. From the E D A for that, so maybe we can move that table this till next week and have.
There was one item that was mentioned that they want to use it for, and I can't, it's something to do with agriculture.
Bring it to the Department of Agriculture.
Yeah, I think it's, it's fair, tell you what, have it, more discussion.
We can have John come in and talk about it.
No, yeah, if you want to table.
We'll table it till next session.
So, you withdraw your motion?
Yeah, the continuation of this topic on next meeting. The other thing we talked about earlier was the, in, in the budget process, was the Nicholsville lawnmower, and since then, there's some different options. But since then, we've been notified, some of us, that there's a good price on lawnmower. Given the situation there, the fact that they're maintaining the park, probably volunteer dollars, probably a hundred thousand dollars a year, estimate. And they like to keep the park looking good, and with social, Scott Services doing it, there might be some scheduling conflicts. They like to mow like Thursday or Friday to have ready for a weekend, because that's when they rent it out mostly. So, I would, again, like the board's input on purchasing a lawnmower for the Keegan Park.
The ten thousand dollar?
I think the price now is around between seven and seventy-five.
That does not, that does not go with our procurement policy, we have to follow a procurement policy to purchase anything over five thousand dollars. Which means we have to require, we can't just pick and choose because we want to. We have to follow that procurement policy to the T, if not, we'll get.
But also, we just talked about this on Monday, I think it was the first time that I heard about it was on Monday this week, we, we still need to see if we're.
We need to talk to Scott Services, we need to.
Yes.
Check and see if the mower that we have can, they can use it. So, we've got a good mine that we can check all this out before we come back in, in August.
Yeah.
Yeah, if I could, just give myself, Mr. Dengus, and I'll speak with Mr. Bickers next week. Kind of put our heads together and see what the best options are with that. That's all.
If they get them what they need.
I don't think they can use a zero turn, because the guy that mows, if you're not familiar with a zero turn, you can get in trouble in a hurry. I've got two of them, I've been in the palm.
Get yourself in trouble.
But they're keeping the park up, so we need to do something to get them a mower, because their mower's ready to lay down, it's blowing oil out, it's not got a hood on it. It's got two new tars, if that helps.
How big a mower do y'all think it'd take to take care of that?
He said similar size as that, it's a John Deere, I think, five seventy.
John Deere five seventy, and I think, already has talked to Cox Ford, and they've got it down to seventy-two hundred, which probably you could press them as a Cox Fords. But like she said, the procurement, if, what do you have to do, get three estimates?
Two up to ten thousand.
Two.
Two.
So, be that one plus one more.
We have, they'd have to get another estimate on the mower, and then we'd have to figure out where to get the money from. But they're doing all the work and keeping the park up, so I think at least we can do.
We're paying that part-time person that's doing the mowing, county's paying that part-time person.
Well, I know you're paying them, but you still gotta have something to mow with, he can't, he can't mow with a push mower.
He's a volunteer to mow, the county's paying.
But there's a lot of volunteer errors going in up there.
Would we want to cover the whole cost of the mower, or are you thinking just a portion of the cost and see what they could raise through fundraising means?
Well, they've got some money, maybe Bill said they had nineteen thousand something.
Nineteen thousand, do you know exactly?
Super fighters pay half, and they pay half of that fund or something, but they do need a mower, they're gonna have to have a mower, or the park's gonna grow up and.
Right.
Get out of control, because you can't mow with a mower that's about twenty years old, it's pretty well done its due.
Mr. Wilson, do your due diligence on that?
Come back to us in August, and we'll, we'll see what we can do for them, I think half and half is pretty fair. If we can, if we can do that, where the money would come from, so, gotta figure that out.
Appreciate that, anybody else with any comments? All right, do we have anything to go into close session about, I didn't see anything on the schedule, all right, we don't have anything on that. So that means we can adjourn till August sixth of twenty-twenty-five at nine A M, I'll see y'all here then.